Pledge of Allegiance. And let the record note that all council members are present with the exception of Ms. Armstrong, Ms. Merritt, Ms. Kares, and Ms. Anderson. We have minutes for the meeting of August 6th. Without objection, they'll be approved. Mr. Dabari has read and approved, so that's great. We'll move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybien?
Thanks, Mayor Ingean. So we're setting up committee meetings for this week, and they're all going to be held this coming Wednesday. That's the 15th of August, and there's only three of them, and two of them are the same, well, they're different meetings, same body, different times. I'll just get to it, it'll be more clear. Administration Finance Committee is going to meet this coming Wednesday, the 15th of August. They're going to start at 10:30 in the morning and go till 10:40, only a 10-minute meeting. Budget Committee is going to meet from 10:45 to 11:45 in the morning, and Budget Committee will resume at 12:30 and continue on to 3:30 in the afternoon. All of those meetings are being held right here in the City Council Chambers, 140 West Pine Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Raybien. Any changes to the committee's schedule? Seeing none. Lieutenant McLean, we're good?
Yes, sir.
With that, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening. Don't even need to raise your hand, Kathy. Come on up. If you've not done this before, don't be shy. You need merely let us know your name, please, for the record, and if you can, try to keep your remarks around three minutes.
I can do that. My name is Kathy Witkowski, so I wanted to say hello to members of the council and to thank you for your public service, as well as thanking the mayor for his public service. I live at 1533 Phillips Street on the west side. I have resided there for nearly 27 years. In that time, I've seen a great deal of change in the neighborhood, much of it good, and some of it not so good, especially recently, which is why I'm here this evening. We have a very close-knit group of neighbors. I know most of my neighbors. Many have been there for a long time, and many are moving into the neighborhood. It's kind of the new family-friendly, affordable neighborhood. We have Lowell School just down the street from us. We have a wonderful park, the playground that was built by neighbors. We have the California Street Bridge. We have the river. We're about to get sidewalks put in for Lowell School. We have the bistro. A lot of investment on the city's part has come into the west side, for which we are very, very grateful. However, the past few years have seen a lot of problems due to transients, drugs, crime. And I have seen a lot myself, and I started hearing a lot of stories from my neighbors when I brought this up. So I sort of casually started stopping in at businesses and talking to my neighbors. I put out a little bit of stuff online to try to rally people so that you guys could all hear the stories as well, because some of them were quite shocking. We're talking about needles. We're talking so many needles that the Zip Trip now has a needle collection in their bathroom. The bicycle cop told me he also finds many needles. We've seen people shooting up on the California Street Bridge. We've seen transients pass up and down our street. I used to always tell people who didn't live in Missoula that Missoula was a magic town. It was beautiful. It was a wonderful community to live in, and it was safe. And I'm quite concerned now that I'm not sure I can say that last line any longer. I hear from parents who are afraid for their children. They will not send their children to the park by themselves. I hear of children who will not ride their bicycles across the California Street Bridge even during the day. So these are very, very disturbing pieces of information for me, and I assume for you. I'm sure you are not unaware of the many problems that plague the West Broadway corridor. I wanted you to hear from some people who are really being deeply affected by them and to understand that the problems are not limited to West Broadway, but are seeping back into the residential neighborhood, and that if we do not get more help, that we are going to end up with a blighted neighborhood. I'm starting to hear from neighbors who are talking about moving. This is heartbreaking for me. I have invested heavily in my house. My husband and I just purchased the house across the street that we're refurbishing and going to rent out. So I really want to give a shout-out to the police. They have been nothing short of fantastic. They've been super responsive every time we call, which is a lot. They've been super professional and super helpful, but they are outmanned, and we do not have enough of them. And when summer ends, we lose our bicycle police as well, because they're the school resource officers. This is quite frightening for us, who live near the river. So I'm going to ask those of you who have arrived to share your concerns about the west side, can you raise your hands? So that's a pretty good show, considering that I just threw this out there, and I don't have an organized group. So I think, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to them, so you can hear their stories and really start to put, instead of just statistics, to really start to understand the desperate and heartbreaking nature of the situation that we are in. We have to play catch-up now, and we have to do it fast, and we're really begging for your assistance to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Witkowski. Yes, sir.
Thanks for having me. My name's Matthew La Rubio. I'm a co-owner over at Western Sider at 501 North California Street. I've got a letter that I prepared to discuss this issue after hearing Kathy's remarks. I'm not familiar with what she's been posting online, but I do second what she just said here in front of y'all. I have a lot to talk about. I'm going to just read this letter briefly to y'all, but I'm really interested in discussing solutions with the council, mayor, and our Lewis Group that we've put together, and anyone else in the community that's willing to help out. We are here tonight as a group of citizens living and working on Missoula's west side. I represent my partners, Michael Billingsley and John Clarenbach, as well as a growing number of neighbors in our area, including Imagination Brewing, Youth Homes, Blue Mountain Clinic, Tia's Big Sky, and the interests of many residents with the same concerns. There's a number of issues that are beyond our control on Missoula's west side. We are here to highlight these challenges and ask the city to work with us in creating solutions. Most of our concerns are related to criminal activity, the increasing transient population, the status of city plans, and the condition of the area in general. The specific issues I would like to discuss pertain to Lyons Park, Broadway Island, the California Street Bridge, which is the main corridor between the new Sawmill District and Missoula's west side neighborhood, and I think is integral to some of the issues that we're having. Lyons Park continues to be a place of constant drug use and sales, prostitution, fighting, and a congregation of people with no regard for law or decency. These daily incidents in the park are not solely perpetrated by the transient community. It is a hub for people with and without homes in Missoula, but is known as a place where open containers, drug use, and fighting is rarely prosecuted. Youth Homes unfortunately receives the brunt of these problems, being direct neighbors to that park, and it is sad to see kids that are in need of a safe space being exposed to these things daily. Broadway Island is a refuge when police are patrolling Lyons Park and serves as a hidden campground for the transient population. During river cleanups, we find dozens of needles, as well as a massive accumulation of trash embedding on the island and in the stream. That said, side note, we appreciate the city's effort in cleaning that up. We know we, as a city, spend a lot of money, I know, especially last summer, cleaning up the island constantly, daily, all along the River Trail, and understand that there are solutions in place to try to mitigate that. California Street Bridge is a pedestrian resource that has become a spot for graffiti throughout the years. The graffiti on the free wall, which I personally used to paint on, has long migrated from the fence to the lampposts, to the sidewalk, now every part of the bridge. The tags are vulgar, obnoxious, and are rarely, if ever, removed. The bridge represents a lack of pride our community has in Missoula's west side in some ways. These are just the immediate issues in our area. We understand Kim at Tia's, Fernanda, Imagination, Youth Homes, and the neighborhood as a whole has a host of other issues. We are in full support of the steps the city is taking in bettering our neighborhood, including the West Broadway Island Project that Parks and Rec will hopefully be implementing this year. This is an integral step in the right direction. We appreciate the continued efforts of Missoula's City Police Department in responding to calls and increasing their presence in the area. We also support any plans that link the River Trail from Orange Street to the California Street Bridge in an effort to complete the downtown trail system and better integrate the west side of Missoula to the rest of the town. We understand that the dilemmas concerning homelessness, substance abuse, mental health, and criminal activity are challenges that every city faces and are seemingly growing across the nation. Many of these issues have complex solutions or may never be solved. That said, we would like to discuss solutions with our council members in the community and encourage an immediate measure for your consideration. The north side pedestrian bridge has had cameras for several years. We wonder why the California Street Bridge does not. I have discussed this with Donna Gockler at Parks and Rec, and now I'd like to formally ask the mayor and city council to incorporate surveillance of the California Street Bridge into their budget for 2019. The usefulness and effectiveness are without need for research, in our opinion, which is just in response to Donna, who is a friend and previous colleague, as I was at the Homestead. She said that needed more research. We don't really think that's necessary. We need resources allocated to help with these problems. We need continued police presence. We need paint and paint-removal material. We need some help, and we are already very happy to help ourselves with the assistance of the city. From here, we will meet with our city council representatives and our neighborhood council we have formed to discuss our problems and possible solutions in detail. We appreciate all the effort the city, our community, nonprofit organizations, and businesses have put into these issues up until now. We look forward to further discussions and activation in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So before we go on, I just want to let you all know that this is a topic of frequent conversation in my office and among our management team, and I am more than happy to get together with some or all of you at your convenience, and we can arrange that, again, at your convenience. We're looking for solutions, too, and could certainly use your help, so please understand that there's plenty of sympathy around this table, and certainly within my office and among staff, to try to address the problem. So if Kathy wants to be an organizer, or any of you want to be organizers, I am easy to find, for better or worse, and am happy to get together at your collective convenience. There are lots of you who put your hands up. Mr. Rubio's comments were about seven minutes, based on my rudimentary math skills learned in journalism school. If we all go seven minutes, we will be here until sometime tomorrow, so I might ask you to make your remarks just a little bit briefer for us, if you'd like, and if someone has said what you wanted to say, let them speak for you. Your hands speak volumes. The fact that you're here in these numbers speak volumes to this table, so we appreciate your time and coming down. And with that, whoever's next, come on up. We don't go for polite here. That usually gets a little ugly sometimes, so...
Well, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'm going to piggyback on Matthew. So my name's Dan Cordini. I'm the program director for the Attention Home. It's the full name Shirley Miller Attention Home. We're the shelter here in town and associated with youth homes, so a part of youth homes. And so we abut Lyons Park and stone's throw away from Matthew at Western Sider. And so, yeah, we have a full view of California Street Bridge, Lyons Park, and so I just wanted to come today and just really say, I think it is a complex problem. I think that we really do need your help, and I'm sure we can sit down and talk about solutions, but it really just has affected us really severely. I've been there now, going on 11 years. Spent a lot of time as a direct care worker, so played a lot of football and frisbee in that park. We no longer can do that. So there's a lot of people that are sleeping in the park, trying to recover maybe from the night's activities or the day's activities, lots of drug use, feces by our bedroom windows, needles in the bushes, vomit, and then just repeated acts of violence that are out back that we do call the police, and the police are very responsive about, and we're appreciative of that. But it's hard to watch, and it's hard for kids that are at risk and coming from difficult homes to watch that on a routine basis as well, and so we end up being inside, you know, or going somewhere else to try to recreate versus being outside to have a conversation. And so I just wanted to bring that, instead of being general, very specific. So, yeah, I'm selfish for being here, because the Lyons Park has been awesome, and I think, you know, the neighborhood's always had its, I think, things happen. We've witnessed a number of things, but just it's really exponentially increased in the last two years, but this summer specifically, where before we could be outside more, but now it's just, it owns the back, you know? Yeah, that's all I wanted to say. So I would be interested to sit down and have some ideas, but I really do think it probably starts with some form of resources to even maybe start some of that problem-solving background, so... But I thank you again for your time, and I want to just second, I think that, given the city's large and the area's small, and how often we do call, is that the response has been great, and so I'm thankful of that. And when something big does happen, everyone seems, the folks that are struggling with addiction in the backyard seem to also scatter, you know? So they're responsive to the police presence, which I'm thankful for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Patrick Montgomery, and I want to thank the mayor's office and a lot of you who have met with us on this subject. I know you guys are working with us, and it's a very difficult problem. I'm the, I live at 1333 Tool Avenue. I am president of our condominium homeowners association, and I don't want to repeat, I don't want to repeat of what's been said, but there is a lot of fear among the ground-floor residents in our condominiums, who are mostly elderly and/or disabled. We have, because of our proximity with the Pavarello Center and the casino, we have a lot of loitering that goes on around and on our property, and the ones most affected by this are the first-floor residents, who, as I said, are elderly and disabled. We're now having transients going door-to-door asking for money. We just had an episode, and Shelley was in the middle of this, if you're out here, where a gentleman was trying to sell, I'm sure, stolen goods on our property, and he made a huge scene when Shelley asked him to leave. And this is what we're noticing, and I know there's so many factors involved here, but the personalities are extremely unpredictable. I have been threatened twice this year, just politely asking people to leave our property, or felt threatened. We had one young gentleman walking home. He's mentally disabled, and someone asked him for a cigarette, and he apparently didn't give it to him. He got punched from behind, and I got the hospital records on this, so he went right to ER. But it's a problem that, you know, if a fairly competent, capable person is nervous, think about these other people. We have people in our units who don't want to go to their cars at night. We've had three automobiles broken into just this summer. Bikes are being, this is the stuff you hear all the time. So I'm just concerned about our neighborhood and that, you know, as Kathy said, we can work together, get a handle on this before it gets to the point of where it's out of control. One more quick thing, we have a young family in our condominium units who just had their first child, and the first thing they did was put the unit for sale. So I hope we can keep this a family-friendly neighborhood, and I appreciate you for listening, and I look forward to working with you. And again, thank you for all of you who have met with us, and we'll look forward to talking with you again. Thank you.
Thanks, Doc. Ms. Ma'am.
Hi, I'm Shelley Wilson. I also live at the Off-Broadway condos, and I very much appreciate your time here. I'm kind of like Kathy. I want to give a big shout-out to the police officers. I know it's like impossible, but I actually talked to one of them that was on a bike and said, "I'd like to put in a proposal that they get a six-figure income." And that's never going to happen, but I'm telling you, that's just how much they mean. The sad thing is that, you know, people say, "Well, it's their job, you know, to come out and do this," but I'm to the point where I feel bad calling 911. I've called it so many times that I'm sitting at home thinking, "I hope people, dispatchers, don't think this is some crazy lady with nothing better to do," but we've been encouraged, even by them, to call because, you know, they say we need to know what's going on, and that's kind of how the ball got started. So I just want to write down a few examples, but I want to start off current today, before noon, and I know it was before noon because I had to leave at noon to pick my husband up from the airport. I actually had to make three people get off of our property, and two of them, it was a young man, a young woman, literally felt comfortable enough to be wrapped up in their blanket on the lower level next to somebody's front door with their phone plugged in. And I woke them up. I said, "You guys are trespassing. You need to leave." The problem is, people aren't getting up and leaving. They're trying to argue, and I don't go anywhere outside my condo without my dog. And it's a good thing, because I've had a few incidences where I feel that if I didn't have that dog with me, it might have turned out pretty bad. And also, after that gentleman, when I did take my dog out to go to the bathroom the second time, there was a gentleman sitting on the wall, which is basically somebody's front door on the lower-level condo. It's their patio, and they're across the street from the casino. The guy is two feet from the "no trespassing" sign, and I said, "Sir, can you read that?" And he looked up at it and wanted to start talking to me about my dog, and I said, "You need to leave. You're trespassing. We are instructed to call 911, because this is ongoing. Can you please leave?" And he continued to argue and hid his beer can behind him, and I said, "You're drinking on our private property. I'm calling 911." Well, he got up and left, and this is just before noon today, and there's so many incidences, I don't have enough time to talk about it. I've only lived in Missoula for 11 months. I bought that condo, thinking, "This is awesome. I'm within walking distance to downtown to go have coffee. I'm within walking distance to the park and the river." And I don't feel comfortable at all, and this started as soon as I started here. I have several incidences here. I don't even have time to read them, but not just the confrontations and getting out of my car in broad daylight, coming home, having somebody standing right in front of my parking spot. I didn't feel comfortable getting out of my car, so I rolled down the window, and I said, "You need to leave. You're on private property, and he's trying to sell me this gadget in a box." And, you know, the thing is, he started telling me he was the government, he owned my building. You know, and when people start going off like that, I'm like, you know, who knows? Who knows what I've just, you know, whatever. Our vehicle, one of our vehicles, has been broken into on our private property in our parking lot two times within two months. The console in the Jeep, when we called the company, they said, "We're actually going to replace that, because those cannot be broken into." And my husband had to send them pictures. When he talked to them on the phone after they got the pictures, they said, "Somebody must have had a heavy-duty crowbar, and it must have taken a couple people to do that." Well, my son and his fiancee live in the same condos. They have to get up and go out to that same parking lot at 4:30 in the morning, because they both, at their jobs, work at 5:00 in the morning. This is going on in the middle of the night. They're 21 and 24, and they're afraid to go out there at night. So I'm getting up, and I'm walking out there and watching them get in their cars. And because if somebody can pry open something that Jeep says can't be pried open, you know, that takes a lot of guts, but somebody's got some power, too, you know? And to me, this is dangerous. It's not just whining and sniveling about somebody walking on the grass. Like I said, I don't have time to read the rest of these, but that's just a little bit, and I would give anything to be able to talk to you guys about some type of a solution. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I actually need you to come to the microphone, so everyone can hear you, ma'am.
I'm nervous.
Thank you.
I'm not feeling particularly grateful. I need to be straight about that. I've stood here before when we were fighting Pavarello coming into our neighborhood.
Ma'am, I apologize. Can I get you a little closer to the microphone, so I can hear you?
I've stood here before, trying to prevent with neighbors Pavarello coming into our neighborhood, right in the middle of our neighborhood, and I'm wondering what happened to the assurances that we had that this would not happen. I also have plenty of instances. I live on Cooper Street, about two blocks from the last lady. This summer, we had a bike stolen, a light-lock bike and a truck. We've had strangers come onto our gated property. You know, I'm not going to take up a lot of time with that. This is not complicated. I would like to see police cars going through our neighborhood five or six times a day. I would like to see police presence all the time where you hear about these horrible problems. They just need to be there all the time, and it will end. I don't feel like people care about our low-economic neighborhood, and it makes me very angry. Thank you.
Your name, ma'am, for the record, please?
Candace Lostrop.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Tony Crescenzo. I'm here on behalf of On Center Performing Arts. I am the newly-minted co-owner. My wife started On Center Performing Arts. Lisa Michelle Dear is her name. She started it approximately 15 years ago, and many of the issues that you have already heard about are issues that On Center faces daily. I have two letters here from the managing director and one of the day managers. Most of them you've already heard about. The important things I think that need to be put on record this evening are, several times in the last two years, we've had people who are not part of the studio, who don't have children, who are transient in nature, walk into the studio and either try and use the restroom, which is the less scary part, or try and sit down and watch the dance classes as they're happening. We're talking about dance classes that involve children, mostly young women and girls, from the ages of two to 16, so I would like that to be on the record. And I'd also like to say that there's been several times where, late at night, families, men, women, and families have been approached as people have... men, women, and families have been approached as people have been leaving and asked for money, followed to their cars, and thankfully, nothing worse than that. We are directly across the aisle, sorry, the alley from Zip Trip. So many of the same problems, and people who frequent the Zip Trip are part of that. And obviously, with many of the people behind us that have already spoken, and many I'm sure that are to come, a lot of the same issues with vandalism, needles, trash, loitering, food, conversations, unwelcome others, and voyeurism, looking through the windows. So much so that we've had to add covers for the windows and kept all outer doors closed except the front door while classes are going on. So, thank you for your time, and I apologize, I must leave immediately. I have other things to attend to, but I do thank you for your time, and I thank everybody for showing up, because obviously, there's a consensus here, and I know you guys are working on some solutions, but certainly, the support of the police is paramount. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Brian Dernberger. I own Montana Glass, directly across from Pavarello. We've met several times before on specific things, and so three specific things that I think the city council overall needs to address is things that will help the cops. The car camping situation, instead of just being addressed with RVs, need to be specifically cars. The second is the overpopulation of the Pavarello itself. When it was first opened, I believe that the population was to max out at 120. Now, as I understand, it's 175, capping at 150 on a regular basis. And the third is possibly moving the soup kitchen outside of the Pavarello and having that separate. I think a lot of the transient population that we see moving through the neighborhood is people coming to and from to get their meals. They're not monitored as closely for substance abuse, and that's probably the people who are bothering the businesses, bothering the people in the neighborhood. So if the city council can address those three, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Dernberger. Yes, sir.
My name is Jay Kirby. I live at 1533 Phillips. My wife and I, we walk almost every night in, down to California Street Bridge and across to the Silver Park. And some of the things that we've seen, I've seen a couple guys sitting right in the nice bench planter at the north end of the bridge. A guy shooting up, looks at me and smiles and pokes it in, and I've seen kids in the youth homes that were playing on the backside of their fence, and I've seen a couple of really rough-looking transients walk over and try to talk to the girls. I think the California Street Bridge is a treasure in this community. It's the most beautiful bridge practically that I've ever seen. And to see the graffiti that's starting to grow on the floor of that bridge, I think, is absolutely something that we shouldn't stand for. We should paint that bridge every day if we have to, to keep that stuff from happening. Silver Park and California Street Bridge and the whole West Side, I think, are really great places to be and to live, but in the last year or two, things have changed. I've had my car broken into and tools stolen out of it. We worry about leaving our door open. We never, never even locked the door, thought about it, and now every time we go away, we lock the door. So there is a problem. I have seen, we live on the corner of Phillips and Calper, and I can say that since the trailer court that's to the north of us has been shut down, we have a lot less foot traffic coming down Calper to go to the Zip Trip convenience store, which we really appreciate. And I know part of that is because there's a lot more activity by the police that's been in our neighborhood, and I really appreciate that, but we need more. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
My name is Bruce Allen, and I live at 1538 Cooper, which is Cooper and Calper, right on the corner. Just changed one letter. And I have been physically confronted at the California Street Bridge. Some guy was just hell-bent to fight me, and I have been physically assaulted in my driveway.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Hello, everyone. My name is Connie Boatwright. I live at North Davis and River Road. Just bought the place, it was less than a year ago. We walked our dog down to the river, and the guy said, "What are you doing here?" "We're taking our dogs for a walk. What are you doing here?" He says, "I live here, the North Davis Reserve Street Bridge, right there." He says, "I'll kill your dog." I said, "Oh, really? My sons didn't like that. They went back down there. We'll kill you." Not cool. Another trip down there, took a different route. "What are you doing down here?" "We're taking a walk with our dogs." "Well, you threatened to kill my husband. He followed us home, threatened to burn down my house." I called the cops. They came. They said, "There's nothing you can do. Keep a shotgun by your door."
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Skylar Hollingsworth. I'm a lifelong Missoula resident, born and reared, grew up on Missoula's west side, and in the past 28-something years, it certainly has changed. As I believe Kathy had said, there's been a lot of positive growth in the community. People take pride in that community. But unfortunately, over the past couple of years, there have been a lot of really negative incidents. And I don't want to go on at length here. I'll just speak to what I personally witnessed myself or have experienced. My father lives right across the street from Bruce, over at the 1600 block of Cooper, right there on the corner of Cooper and Calper. Walking home from the Zip Trip, he has been followed, he has been threatened. My father's visually impaired. I worry about the guy. I try to check in on him as often as I can. While going around his yard, I found different makeshift campsites, stolen goods, whether it be bicycles or large propane tanks. There have been dirty needles scattered up and down that block. My friend, who had the great misfortune of working as a graveyard shift gas station attendant at the Zip Trip, one evening, I go in and he shows me something. He says, "Come over here. Check this out. Women's bathroom, someone had taken a piece of bubble gum and a dirty needle, and they set it up as a booby-trap rig, so if you were to sit down, it would get you right in the thigh." That's the kind of thing that you just didn't used to hear about in this neighborhood, in Missoula as a community as a whole. And there's been a lot of wonderful investment as far as building up the old Sawmill District, and that California Bridge does serve as the corridor and the connection, but I fear no one will feel safe to cross it, whether it be in broad daylight or at night. And so I thank you for your time and for your consideration. I hope that together, we can find a solution. And I know there are many different problems here, so we're going to need a few different solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Pardon me.
I have to read these papers because I'm nervous as well.
Don't be nervous.
My name's Rebecca Hamilton, and I am the manager of the Magic Diamond Casino and Liquor Store. And I know very well that we are a magnet for this population that we're talking about. And I want to assure everyone here and everyone here that me and my staff go above and beyond to deny service. We do everything we can to eliminate loitering and try to have them go off the property, but then where do they go? You know, they go down to the parks and to people's backyards and the alleys, and so, you know, it's been a battle. And we get threatened on a daily basis. If it's not me, it's someone in my staff with our lives. I've been called some really colorful names lately. We currently have to keep Sharps containers in our maintenance closet because we find so many needles, and we don't know what to do with them. So we called the hospital, and we now put them in Sharps containers and take them down to the hospital when they're full. We've, in the past two years, filled three quart-sized, and now we're on our three-gallon one. We lock our bathrooms. Because of that, people go and pee out in the parking lot, on the other buildings. We lock our doors maximum for company hours that it allows from midnight to 8:00 AM. You have to be buzzed in, mostly because of employees being threatened inside. We're always double-staffed. There's never anybody there by themselves, which I have been at this location now for almost six years. I've been in this industry managing locations for 15 years, and this is a special little neighborhood that has some problems that definitely need to be addressed, and I don't know the answers. I really don't. And it's not just the transient and the people who are at the Pavarello Center. It's a drug problem across the board. I mean, the amount of needles that I have seen in the past couple of years is just astonishing. Our sales as a company over the past three years have dropped. We've lost a lot of good customers that are basically afraid to come there, and they know that we're trying. And, but we can't monitor who walks through our parking lot. We've tried. We've tried to come up with ideas other than just putting a fence up, but, I mean, we're a business, and people walk through our parking lot, walk through our grass, and there's nothing we can do about it. They come into our building, and the only thing we can do is, once they're in there, we have control and we can kick them out. But then again, where do they go? You know? So that's my only concerns, and thank you very much. And the police officers really do a great job for us. We probably call them at least once a day, if not more, and they're really great with responding and everything, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening. My name is Heather Morris. I live at 1433 Sherwood Street, which is the corner of Sherwood and Bulwer. I get a lot of foot traffic from the Zip Trip as well. A couple of incidents that have happened to me in the last year. I was doing yard work last year, realized that someone had pried the crisscross fencing that's sort of up at the side of my garage, because I live up on the hill, so there's this big gap under my garage, so the siding covers that. And someone had ripped it down and set up camp under there. I don't know how long they were there. I found six cell phones, multiple blankets. The police came. They were great. They were like, "There's not much we can do." I boarded it all back up. I'm afraid, I ride my bike year-round. I commute to work back and forth. Sometimes, when I'm approaching my home, I'm afraid to actually pull into my driveway on my bicycle, so I'll ride around the block a couple times until whoever looks a little sketchy has moved on, so they don't see where I live. And just the amount of garbage. Oh, actually, a couple weeks ago, my cameras caught somebody at 2:30 in the morning, just waltzing into my backyard, opening the gate, walking right in. He wasn't there in the morning when I woke up and found the footage, but I found evidence of him, I don't know, camping out there, picnicking. I don't know. But, so there's just, in the last two years, the increase of that type of thing occurring has increased significantly. My, I'm on a little bit of a high alert because several years ago, I actually caught someone referred to as the West Side Winker at my back door, where he had sliced my screen door, tried to get in. I mean, so I live alone. It's a little nerve-wracking, and I don't know what the answers are to, but I just wanted to share my experiences, and I look forward to trying to come up with some kind of solution to this problem, because I love my neighborhood. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Even though I'm a principal and a property on the west side, that's not why I'm here. So I appreciate all the problems and the issues that are being dealt with there, because those are obviously going to affect me at some point in time. But my name is Brad Sheed. I'm a state representative. I represent Lolo and the part of the Mullen Corridor. And the reason I'm here is that after the past election, there was allusions to concerns that individuals had about taxes. I know the mayor himself said that that was something that was on his mind, that taxes were a major issue. What I'm seeing is that it seems we have one person on this council, Mr. Ramos, who, even though he's young, seems to be looking at that issue very seriously. I have walked in Elmar Estates, which is part of my district, and I have found that individuals who were there in 2014 told me that if taxes went up, they would no longer be there, even though they loved their neighborhood, they're no longer there. I'm finding that's happening more and more, and the reason is that the taxes in Missoula City and County are driving people out of this area. Some mom might want to take her child out to dinner for a birthday, but because of tax increases, cannot do that. We saw our property taxes go up significantly. We saw property taxes go up on rentals that I manage significantly. We're seeing issues with tax increment financing that are taking dollars away from the city budget and spending it on projects that are either not being used, as in the case of the bridge over Reserve Street. I've driven by that probably 100 times in the last two years. I've seen four people on it. It's not being used. But we spent $7 million on that particular project with the interest that we'll be paying. We spent $7 million on Mary Street extended from Reserve into the mall. I worked road construction back in my earlier days, in the '70s, and I talked to people who are in that industry now, and they were astonished that that road cost that much. We're spending dollars we don't have to impress people we may not like, and we are not accomplishing the goal that this city has been known for. I'm listening to people talk about the great things that the city has had, but seems to be losing. And we're going to see more and more exodus from Missoula because we're not seeing people who are accountable to the individuals they're supposed to be serving. I'm one of those individuals, being a property owner in the city. There are certain things that I expect the city council should be doing, but they're not looking after the interests of people that I know. And it disheartens me that we're not taking their concerns and their interests to heart. We talked, if I did my math right, in the last four or five years, the city of Missoula has seen nearly one-half billion, city and county, one-half billion dollars worth of tax increases on a population of 100,000 people. And no one seems to think that's excessive. I do. So some of these individuals who live on the west side may not have a concern in the future, because if property taxes go up, they may have to sell their places and move, so that may not be a concern. So I just encourage you strongly to consider the impact that decisions that are being made in this body are having on individuals in our community. And if we're not doing something soon to forestall those issues, we're going to have a great deal of difficulty keeping Missoula a city of regular people that's going to become a playground for people who can afford to live here and will gate their community, so they will not have that issue. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Representative Sheedah. We look forward to getting some help from the legislature for some of those issues. Anyone else this evening? You can bend that Bernie any way you need to.
Can you hear me okay? My name is Bernadine Cantert. I live at 708 Tool Avenue, and I've lived there for about 40 years. And with Little McCormick Park, we've always had transient issues, hobo issues in the old days, where they'd come off the trains and camp out in the park for a day and then get back on the train and leave. And over the course of years, it's changed. The hypodermic needles are an issue. My neighbor found four when the snow melted this spring. My other neighbor in the alleyway found a collection of them on top of a garbage can back there. I called the 911 earlier this week because there was a gentleman who was passed out in the alleyway. They asked me if he was sleeping, and I said I didn't stop to check, so they came and apparently did a well-check on him. I think that what the gentleman before me said has, there's a part to it that rings true, is we gentrify Missoula. We have to recognize that there's consequences, and I don't think that we have an infrastructure to actually deal particularly with the drug issues that are intense. I think the police department needs, and I've thought this for 40 years, stronger community policing so that they are present in our community, and that's what I would urge you to consider. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Thank you. Sir?
My name is Austin Chapin, and I'm here to talk about the west-side neighborhood as well. I've called Missoula home for 15 years now. Eight of those were on the west side, and I'm currently investing in some properties over there, sort of rehabbing those. Not to really beat a dead horse, but a lot of the things that have been said have been true at some of the properties that I have, including people just camping in the backyard and when asked to leave, very competitive, wouldn't leave. 24 hours goes by, they're still there. Call the police to get them removed. Hypodermic needles are a big issue on some of these places that I'm working. I'll come back in the morning and find bags of them thrown around, human feces on the doorsteps of places that I'm working. working, as well as dog feces, things like that. You know, I think there's really a great, a lot of great things going on in the West Side, as everybody said, but I just wanted to call the light some of the issues that I've seen. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Yes, my name is Lido Vazutti, and I live at 514 West Alder. And I just wanted to briefly second everything Representative said. And in trying to keep emotions out of politics, living on the West Side and also being a part of the special assessment on the taxes and lots and pieces and parcels that will be discussed later and adopted or denied, it's hard not to feel that, and I understand the importance of taxes, and I understand the importance of the cleanliness of our city streets, the streets that we use, but it's hard not to feel, living in these neighborhoods and being a part of many of these conversations and having incidences myself with my family and my wife and my child, that, and looking at our property taxes, that two years ago, I believe, went up around 30 percent, that there's more of, that the city is more concerned with the taxable dollars that they can get out of our neighborhood, as opposed to the quality of life that is being provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vazutti. Anyone else this evening? Sir?
Been here since about 1996, and so I was here when the old paw-
Sir, I'm going to ask you, get a little closer to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
My name is Sanderson Clement. I've been here since 1996, and I remember when the old paw was here. And there's definitely been an increase in the amount of transient traffic since then, and I kind of think, you know, the city is just growing exponentially the things that are being talked about. It's going to continue to be a problem. Maybe we'll be able to mitigate that a little bit by, I don't know, maybe for students, having a class that kind of explained, you know, what was going on, why the money's not helping, why it draws people here nationwide. What I've heard is this is kind of a hotspot for transients. This is a great place to be homeless. It's an awesome place to be. But when you have people who don't have a whole lot of happiness in their lives, you often have a lot more drug use. So, you're going to have these problems that everybody's mentioning. It's not really going to stop, because the population size is going to grow. But if you have some educational classes, kind of expand awareness a little bit as to what is bringing these people here, which is probably mostly how eager people are to just dole out dollars to people begging on the streets, maybe it'll help tone down on the problems a little bit. So, obviously, we need to help people who are in need, but having it be so appealing for people who aren't native to this place to come here and be here and stay here isn't helping really anyone. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name's Parker Vikulik, and I wasn't planning on speaking either tonight, but I just thought I'd come up and add my experience living on the West Side. In April of this year, I went out to my garage. I live on the 1200 Block of Howell, and I went out to my garage to find it. The door had been pried open, and two bicycles and a handful of other tools had been stolen. And I dutifully made a police report, and again, they were great, but told me, kind of expectedly, that not a lot could be done, or it's hard to solve these kind of crimes, which I totally understand. But since then, I've been like very, very acutely aware of the issue on the West Side, of seeing individuals in alleys, almost in a way patrolling the alleys, looking for maybe unlocked garages or unlike locked bikes. And I know that's an issue that does happen everywhere, but hearing some of the other people speak tonight, and I'm greatly appreciative that you are looking for solutions to the problem, but I just wanted to talk to hopefully expedite a solution, because my biggest fear is that six months from now, we're all in here again after something worse has happened. Maybe one of those idle threats on the California Street Bridge comes to fruition, or one of the idle threats of asking someone to get off their property comes to fruition, or my garage was broken into and they got away with it, and maybe next time they enter a backyard to get a bike, and maybe onto someone's back doorstep to get a bike, and maybe they try someone's back door handle, and it's open, and now they enter a house, and a worst-case scenario could happen. And so, my biggest fear is that six months from now, a year from now, a year and a half from now, we're back in this chamber, having a worse and a little more dark conversation about the problem on the West Side. So, again, I thank you for your time and hope we can all find a solution.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening? Once again, I really appreciate you all coming down, taking the time on a Monday evening, and I look forward to hearing from Kathy, and I mean, I can make time later this week, next week, whatever we need to do. So, we'll try to work this out. I guarantee you, we're not going to fix it overnight, but we're going to do our best. Thank you again. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda. Items on that agenda were approved by council committees in a unanimous vote. We save a little time on Monday evenings by considering these items all at once. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items aloud, so that folks in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and we'll take comment on these items before we vote. Fire away, Marty.
You ready for the consent agenda? It has seven items tonight. The first, as always, is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable. And this week, they're in the amount of $1,313,345.52. Number two is a first reading and preliminary adoption of an ordinance. City Council is setting a public hearing on August 27, 2018, and preliminarily adopting an ordinance to rezone 1,005 Edith Street, which is located in lots 23 and 24 of Block 90 on the South Missoula Edition, in Section 28 Township 13 North Range 19 West, from RT 2.7, which is a residential to a unit townhouse zoning district in the city, to RM 2, which is a residential multi-dwelling district in the city. Based on the findings of fact, set it forth in the staff report, and referring this ordinance to the Land Use and Planning Committee. Land Use and Planning Committee generally does a preview in advance of the public hearings on zoning matters. Number three is to set a public hearing on August 20, 2018, to solicit, easy for me to say, to solicit, comment on whether the proposed Skyview project that's located at the 1600 block of Cooley Street meets a community housing need. Number four is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Escribe Software Limited of Markham, Ontario in Canada, for legislative management software and related services in the amount of $43,400 for the first year and $22,400 annually thereafter for a period of three years. Number five is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Mr. Peter Lambros to the Public Art Committee for a term that commences immediately and expires on June 30 of 2022. Number six is to adopt a resolution declaring the official intent of the City of Missoula to reimburse certain original expenditures related to the purchase of capital equipment from the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds to be issued by the city after the payment of such original expenditures. And finally, number seven is also a reimbursement resolution, thus to adopt a resolution declaring the official intent of the City of Missoula to reimburse certain original expenditures related to sidewalk curb gutter and alley approach improvements from the proceeds of tax-exempt bonds to be issued to the city after the payment, or excuse me, to be issued by the city after the payment of such original expenditures.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Anyone in the audience care to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? Comment on your questions from council members? Seeing none, we'll have a roll-call vote.
Okay, on the consent agenda, let's see. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Dubarry. Dubarry votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes yes. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. And West. West votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is eight ayes and four absent.
And the consent agenda is approved. I'm unaware of any comments from city, pardon me, city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, or the community forum this evening. We do have one public hearing, stay on our own council rules, set guidelines for inviting comment in a formal way on a variety of issues. Following the staff report on each of these, council, pardon me, and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as the public hearing, unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. And our lone public hearing is on a resolution leaving annual assessments for street maintenance district number one, and our staff report comes from Ms. Raybine.
Thank you, Mary. And my name is Marty Raybine, and I'm your Legislative Services Director and City Clerk. So, our public hearing this evening is about street maintenance district number one. Let me talk to you a little bit about the services that are performed in that district. The district has existed since, I think it's 1908 was when it was founded. It was originally a sprinkling district to sprinkle the dirt streets, so it wasn't quite so dusty downtown. It has evolved into a district that provides extra street sweeping services downtown, as well as picking up the trash from all of the garbage cans that are located downtown. The city street division sweeps the streets in downtown Missoula more frequently than they do other areas of the city. They do it once a week instead of once a month, and the city has a contract with the Business Improvement District downtown to empty all the trash cans. They do that more regularly in the spring, summer, and fall, when it's super busy downtown, a little less often in the winter season. This year, the BID contract portion of this assessment district is remaining the same. The street department is requesting a $2,500 increase for increased costs related to labor and machinery for a total increase of 3%. And total assessments for fiscal year 19 would be $104,378.40. I am here if anyone has questions.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience care to comment on the street maintenance district? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Seeing none. Ms. Harp?
Yes, as Chair of the Administration Finance Committee, I'd like to adopt a resolution leaving a special assessment and tax on the lots, pieces and parcels of land situated within street maintenance district number one of the City of Missoula, Montana, generally located in the downtown area in the amount of $104,378.40, for the purpose of deferring the cost of flushing and removing street rubbish from streets and avenues in the district during the fiscal year 2019.
That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll-call vote.
On the motion, Dubarry. Dubarry votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes no. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. And Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is seven ayes, one nay, and four absent.
And the motion is approved. No more public hearings. I'll pass on communications from the mayor and begin general comments of city council members with Mr. Dubarry.
I'd like to ask Mr. Ramos who would pick up the trash if we don't do this. So, hopefully he'll reconsider his thinking around that. Also, it's somewhat unfortunate that Mr. Sheeda decided to leave and didn't stick around to see what it takes to actually run a city. And it's also unfortunate that he seems to be consulting the same set of unsubstantiated assertions that Mr. Ramos does.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Von Losberg?
Quick word of congratulations to our colleague, Ms. Kares, on the birth of her daughter. And I wanted to thank all the folks that came down. Most of them have obviously left. My six-year-old daughter is a first grader, will be a first grader at Lowell, and she's a ballet dancer on street, and even if we didn't have those personal experiences, still care very deeply about the experiences of the folks there. But because of those personal experiences, it brings it home even more. So, thank you to all the folks who came down tonight.
Ms. Sarah?
I too would like to thank everyone from, especially from the West Side, who came to provide comments and raise their concerns. For more than 10 years, I lived across Lowell School, so I can attest to a lot of the comments, the concerns that were raised today, but I can also attest to the great kindness of the neighborhood, the collaborative spirit that the neighborhood has, and I am sure that we can find a prompt solution, or at least start working on some of these issues together. So, I thank them for taking the time to come here and speak with us.
Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to start by saying that I enjoyed your rendition of that song the other night. I thought it was quite good, Mr. Mayor. Also, on the note of musical talent, I had the privilege of going to my first Missoula Symphony Orchestra concert last night, and it's going to be a shame to see Mr. Darko leave, or Darko leave, because that was one of the most incredible and inspiring performances that I had seen. So, on to the not-as-fun stuff to discuss. So, on the issue of homelessness, I've been hearing this a lot from constituents. It's not that the folks in Missoula don't have compassion. We certainly have compassion for these folks, but there's young ladies in my district that are not safe walking home at night. There are young kids that may be 11, 12, that aren't allowed to go get ice cream in their hometown because of some of the dangers they're presented with. And I just think we have to find the right balance. I know that it's a lot easier said than done, but it's something that I wanted to bring up, too, that we represent those folks as well. And another issue I wanted to bring up, and I can't tell if Dr. Dubarry enjoys our back-and-forth banter, because I kind of do, so I enjoy the quips. But, so, just wanted to state for the record that not everybody that disagrees with you politically, Mr. Dubarry, is wrong, or not correct, or mistaken, or misguided, as you would like to say. We have general concerns. We care about the citizens as much as you do. We just have different ways of trying to help out these folks. On the issue of TIF funding, I know Representative Sheeda brought it up. It kind of ties into the homeless situation as well. The Pavarello Center, as I understand it, the demolition of the hotel, used TIF money, which TIF money, according to state law, is supposed to eliminate blight. And I would challenge my fellow council members to speak to the members of this neighborhood and ask them if the neighborhood is more or less blighted since the Pavarello Center came in there. And I think that that's something that we need to be mindful of. Just, I know that we have good intentions and everything we do, but a lot of times, the road to destruction is paved with good intentions, and we have to be mindful of all the consequences. We have to look at this kind of like a maintenance fund for open space. We have to look at the fact that we did put this Pavarello Center in, but I think the maintenance one would be more funding for police in the area. And I understand, Mr. Mayor, you're suggesting three new police officers. I'd like to see us cut back on some other services and bump that up to six, some of the general basic services of the city. I think that we should focus on those. Again, this isn't a fun issue to talk about. It's not building a park. It's not building the Pavarello Center. It doesn't feel good to have to talk about this. We have to make hard choices between some of the homeless folks and some of the citizens as well, the other citizens that are fortunate enough to have a home. And I just want to say for the record, I mean, I've had some testy exchanges tonight before the council, and despite what my fellow council members think, I'm not the devil, believe it or not. I don't have horns. I'm not an evil guy. I don't come up here trying to bash my fellow council members. I come up here trying to represent a different point of view, and it's difficult to do when you're 1 verse 11. I was told that, watching the city council meetings, I was like the last musketeer in Three Musketeers against all the Cardinals' cards, but I don't feel that way at all. I like everybody up here, and I don't think it's the same way, unfortunately. I can disagree with folks up here and not dislike them in any stretch of the imagination. If I saw any one of you guys on the side of the road, I would stop and help, and I'd like to think you guys might do the same. But I just feel a lot of hatred. I just want to get it out there. I'm not trying to hurt anybody. I'm trying to work for the citizens. And last week, I talked about the discrepancy of income inequality, and unfortunately, I had to wait a whole week to discuss this. I know that Mr. Von Losberg and I had a civil discussion about the mills levying. And well, he's right that we don't rely as heavily on the special districts that Billings does, by any stretch of the imagination. We still are part of a big piece of a culture in Missoula that does like higher taxes. I mean, you can go to the cadastron, you can look up a $330,000 house in the City of Missoula, and you can look up the same house in Bozeman or Billings, and it still follows that mill levy trend. I understand that there's bond issues involved. I understand there's schools. I understand that there's county, but we're all part of- that there's county, but we're all part of the culture of the taxes. When we get up here and say that this bond is going to be great, we're going to put it on the ballot, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we support everything about it, people look to us to be leaders, they look to us to tell them, okay, maybe we can't afford this right now, they look to us to make those tough calls, and I think that the taxes do play a big role in the income inequality. And it's just something that I really wanted to get off my chest, I brought this up during the campaign about tax increment financing, we saw when the budget came out, oh, sorry, when the taxable values came out, all the growth in the city of Missoula, the taxable growth in the taxable value was captured by the urban renewal districts, and I said last year, probably August 8, when I was running for city council, I asked, there's a lot of new development happening in the city of Missoula, where is the tax base going? Is it all being captured by the urban renewal districts? And I didn't get any answers, and this has been reported in the Missoulian, I've checked with the DOR, and you can look at the numbers, it has been captured by the urban renewal districts. So we do need to be wary of TIF. I mean, there are situations where it's okay, but we, I believe, have overused it, I understand that, but it's something that I am looking forward to working with folks on. I want to be considered an actual member of the council, I want people to realize that I do have ideas to offer, and I think I laid this out in some of my recent emails to folks, so I just want to let that be known that I'm here to work with you, Mr. Mayor, if you're looking for areas to cut, I do think there are some spots that we can work together on. I know that you were concerned about the valuation hike last year, and you formed a working group, and so I was surprised to see that you were relying on a valuations increase despite the fact that you were concerned last year for the folks that had really been hit hard, so I'd love to work with you on the other side of stuff, the cutting side, not the increase in spending side. So thank you all for listening.
Ms. Hess?
First of all, I want to thank the West Side neighborhood for coming tonight. I am a fellow West Sider, and I hear you loud and clear, I experienced a lot of the issues you experienced, and I really look forward to working collaboratively on a solution. I've been in contact, I knew a lot of the people in the audience and have been in contact with many of you, and really thank you for your involvement. The, and Ms. Basara touched on this, the spirit of the West Side is best captured in the fact that everyone came down here tonight, and it's a neighborhood where we look out for each other, we help each other out, it is a close-knit area, a close-knit group of people, and it's a good group of people, and so onward and upward, and I look forward to it. Many of, shifting gears a little bit, the California Street Bridge was built with tax increment financing, Silver Park was built with tax increment financing, the roundabout tool, and Scott was built with tax increment financing, and Broadway Island will be improved and made into a really lovely public park through tax increment financing. So this is a tool that municipalities have, I'm not going to get into the merits, I just think that in this particular example tonight, we have a lot of good done with this tool, and I look forward to that tool being part of the solution to some of the long-term infrastructure needs on the West Side, which is partially in District Two. So, look forward to future West Side discussions, and I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
So, this Saturday, the Missoula Outdoor Cinema is showing V for Vendetta, and that'll start at sundown at the Head Start School on the North Side, and then I am also, so I live on the North Side, but I walk to my job pretty much every day on the West Side, and I'm also very familiar with a lot of the things that are happening in both of our neighborhoods, and I regularly call the police as well. I just called the police last weekend because someone was assaulting his potentially girlfriend next door, I'm staying right now. But I also am somewhat disappointed that Representative Cheetah left us so soon because we are very limited on how we fund things in our community, and as things have been cut on the state level, we see the repercussions, and part of that is that we've lost a lot, a lot of direct services to folks who are already on the margins or struggling with addiction or struggling with homelessness, and that has a direct impact on what our police have to deal with and what people have to deal with every day. So I would love to see maybe some of those things funded again on the state level, so I'll leave it at that.
And Ms. Harp?
So there were 19 of folks from the West Side/North Side neighborhood that spoke tonight, and I want to thank you all for sticking around as well, because even though you may not have gotten up and spoken, your presence here does really make an impact. I was a resident of the North Side on Bull War for about two and a half years, and it was a really charming little neighborhood, even two blocks away from the railroad tracks. 16 years ago, I joined the Kiwanis Club of Missoula because I thought it was time that I try to do something in terms of giving back to our community. In our Kiwanis Club, every month, we honor a Student of the Month from Lowell School, and it's a really kind of a wonderful collaboration, I think, between the service clubs as well as just your neighborhood, and maybe some of your kids have been the beneficiary of a Student of the Month gift certificate and that sort of thing. But we've also done other things at Lowell. And then, I'm going to say probably about 10, maybe nine years ago, I joined the board of the Pavarello, and I did so because I have a brother-in-law that has been homeless due to mental illness and has been that way for about 10 years, and I've also had my parents who've also experienced homelessness, and they've had to couch surf and stay with me for some period of time. And it was kind of an obvious outlet to try and do some good for the greater community. That being said, what you have experienced is extraordinary, and not in a good way. It's scary, and I can't even fathom what it must be like for any one of you in the neighborhood. It should not be something that you have to endure. And so, if the mayor will allow me to join the other representatives here from Words One and Two, I would love to participate in whatever conversation that goes forward in terms of trying to make this community a little bit better. And I'd also like to chime in on a couple of comments from some of my fellow colleagues that said, just so that you understand, what we have in terms of resources at the city level to fight some of this is very, very limited, and I think you all know that. And every year, this budget comes before us, and this is going to be my first go-around, but it's not an easy task because there are so many needs, and every year, as we know, inflation goes up, let's say it's 3%, state law restricts us from going up by that same amount, in fact, only allows us to go up by half of the percentage that inflation goes up. So we are forced to do more and more with less and less, and so then the quandary becomes, do we reallocate resources from the Streets Division and stop fixing potholes and move it over to police, or do we go the other way? There's no great solution, and until the state legislator gives us a little bit more flexibility so that our community, as well as all the other communities across Montana, have that kind of power to actually self-govern a little bit more, I think then we won't be able to address this issue unless those at the state level step up. So, keep at it, keep reporting, and be part of the solution, folks. Thank you for coming tonight.
We have no committee reports this evening, we do have an item of new business, in order to take that up, we'll need a motion to suspend the rules, I would entertain that at this point. Ms. Hess?
I move we suspend the rules to take up the noise ordinance variance request.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience care to comment on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, we'll have a voice vote on the motion to suspend. Those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and we can consider the item. Mr. Monroe, would you like to tell us a little bit about what's cooking?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Nugent, members of the council. I'm Troy Monroe, Assistant City Engineer, and I come to you tonight with a request last minute, came in this morning. It's from Western Escavating, they are the contractor for the Missoula County Fairgrounds expansion project, and they need to shut down a water main in order to make a tap this weekend. The water main is on Russell Street, it's a dead-end main, and it serves the YMCA. In order to do this connection, they need to have that unpressurized, and the YMCA scheduled what works best is Sunday night, so they're coming to you to ask for a variance from the noise ordinance, which also coincides with the work order of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM to allow them to work Sunday night to do this tap. So, open any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe, appreciate that. Mr. Hess, do you have a motion?
I do, I thought last-minute request, this might be for Pearl Jam. I'll make the recommended motion to approve the request, and I would just request that staff follow the standard communication and notification that we've talked about it for previous, for previous variance requests.
That motion is in order. Anyone in the audience care to comment on the motion? Comments from council members? Seeing none, we'll have a, we can do a voice vote on this one, actually. Those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have no additional new business. Are there any additional items to be referred? Seeing none of those, any miscellaneous communications, reports, petitions, or announcements? Seeing none, as always, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your service, we will be adjourned.